So we'll go ahead and get started. And welcome to our October seventh, two thousand and twenty-four meeting. And if you would please stand with us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers.
Here.
Alabas.
Present.
Ingalls.
Here.
King. Mayor Felkins.
Here. Okay, and if we could get an emotion to approve the agenda as presented this evening?
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King. Shippers. Yes. Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, I'll go ahead and open in public comment, but before I do, I just want to remind everyone that when you come forward, if you would please state your name and then write your name and your address for the clerk, that's very much appreciated. And if you could keep your comments to three minutes or less. And then additionally tonight, I just want to say that I know this evening we have on our agenda the opportunity to set a public hearing for bed and breakfast here in the community. And so I want to just clarify that we are talking about bed and breakfast. We are not talking about VRBOs. We have already addressed VRBOs and they are being enforced. So tonight, if there's any public comment as it relates to bed and breakfast, I just wanted to sleep, see, excuse me, seek that clarification to keep the conversations going. Thank you. So if anyone would like to come forward?
So I'm Andy Van Alst, and I'm not clear on what the difference is between a bed and breakfast or a short-term rental. It's reading in the paper, the proposed change zoning for RM one and RM two districts to allow for the operation of bread and breakfast. And that came as a result of somebody asking for a bed and breakfast, not a short-term rental. I don't know the difference. And it's a number of people spoke out against this, they didn't see any difference. So I'm not alone. And the bed and breakfast is indistinguishable. Along, I said that along with several other people. Dubravik said something about changing the use of the area. The attorney said that they have had no issues with people that lived in them before, but that's not really true. There are a couple rentals that had people that were living in them. Another article said changes for the city changes the zoning code. So it's not allowed, a bed and breakfast even, is not allowed under existing zoning where it is. So you're proposing changing or writing in new zoning language to allow something that's unique. It's not anywhere else in the city. There's not one other Airbnb anywhere. And a bunch of people spoke out against that. So I keep referring back to the memo from of October of twenty-one from John Wallace that the short-term rental shall include housing units being rented under various rental platforms such as Airbnb, VRBO for less than thirty days. The rental of housing units either within a home or including an entire home. So if it's within a home, I'm going, yeah, that's a, I wonder who would be in the other part of that? Oh, okay, the owner. It is clear that the drafters of the ordinance could distinguish between the permanent lodging and long-term rental and that of short-term rental. They felt the need to identify the districts which were appropriate for short-term rentals and rental situations. Based upon this analysis, was his interpretation, the short-term rentals are permitted only in TS one, TS two, B one, and B two. And you guys codified that. So if this isn't a short-term rental, if, if less than fifteen days isn't a short-term rental, yeah, clarify it, right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Andrea Lilly. Um, I spoke a couple weeks ago. I'm not here tonight to say that anybody was, it's not, my purpose is to, being here is to clarify, um, facts that I was given and then was told that it was wrong. It is going to cost approximately six thousand dollars, if not more, to put in water in my house. That is the cost that it will be for my neighbors. Four other households, including mine, so that's five households. I came here to s- to speak on what was communicated to me from the utilities department. And, um, the, uh, just kind of, um, seems like there isn't, uh, the greatest communication in that section. Um, I was reading articles from earlier this year and, um, on April third, Nine and Ten News came out with an article called "City of Cadillac Will Not Test For PIFAs Near Industrial Park", says cleanup is complete. Um, the article details the utility department saying that, um, if the EPA wants to find PIFAs, then they will need to test it and then they will need to find the responsible parties. Um, and then at the end of it, it said, and I quote, "The city said they do not anticipate the EPA will find PIFAs in the area." Um, and it was the, um, the district that, or the area that has tested positive PIFAs, elevated PIFAs levels. I was wondering if EPA has actually done testing? Um, I tried to find results, but I couldn't find them. Um, Bill Barnett has been having a lot of posts on Facebook. Um, and I was hoping for some communication on that front. Um, he's been coming through with tons of different, uh, facts. Um, and I was wondering if there was anybody who would be able to speak on that, maybe?
Okay, Andrea, that's the end of your time. Thank you.
Hello, again and again and again. My name is Pat Ponzac. I live in Cadillac. Um, I just have a question about bed and breakfast. Sounds like it's kind of like a mini motel, but with breakfast being served. And what kind of regulations would there be for fire? Does the fire department have to pass a code? Do they have to have fire access, what kind of rules would they have to meet for that? Uh, would they have to be handicapped accessible? They're going to be providing food? Uh, will the health department have to provide an okay for these people? If indeed we should do this, which I don't think should, because once again, we're talking short-term rentals, you call it whatever you want to, but it's a short-term rental with breakfast thrown in.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. And this evening, we do have the minutes from our regular meeting that was held on September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, along with the minutes from a closed session on the same day.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King. Shippers.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries. I apologize. Fall allergies, I keep clearing my throat. Um, the city this evening has the honor of presenting a proclamation to our local chamber of commerce. They are celebrating one hundred and twenty-five years. So I'm going to read it as follows. Whereas chambers of commerce strive to address the community's top challenges and greatest opportunities through bold leadership and innovative problem solving. And whereas chambers of commerce foster stronger, more vibrant communities by advocating for priorities to promote economic prosperity, boost quality of life, and create access to meaningful employment and opportunity for all residents. And whereas chambers of commerce are champions of communities, serving as a trusted resource for businesses, residents, and other stakeholders. And whereas chambers of commerce create catalytic community partnerships to build resilient economies and promote community-wide prosperity. Whereas since eighteen ninety-nine, the Cadillac area Chamber of Commerce has been dedicated to assisting members with local state and federal connections and communications through partnership, legislation, and marketing initiatives. That the chamber focuses on local engagement through its networking initiatives and communication through its local presentations. And that the chamber works to build local leaders who will promote the economic growth and development of the greater Cadillac area. Therefore, the city of Cadillac proclaims October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four as Support Your Local Chamber of Commerce Day and encourages Cadillac residents to learn more about the impact of the Cadillac area Chamber of Commerce and the many ways that it supports local businesses. And we do have Beth here from the chamber this evening. And so I would ask Beth to come forward and if you would tell everyone this evening the plans for celebrating this special occasion over at the chamber.
Thank you so much for having me. Um, so we are, actually on October seventeenth, we are going to be, um, celebrating this versus October sixteenth, because it's our, uh, leadership day. But, um, on October seventeenth at noon, we're going to be doing a ribbon cutting where we're welcoming all community members and businesses to come and celebrate with us. Uh, we'll have a reading of our proclamation, thank you so much, um, as well as an opportunity for anybody that is not currently engaged in the chamber to come and meet us and learn about more of the initiatives and programs that we're driving, um, using to drive business forward at the chamber.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. All right, Sandy, we have several communications this evening.
Sandy, I'm gonna just jump in. For the first one regarding Zion Lutheran Church, I was informed of a bit of trivia about them today. And I thought I would share that publicly with the city council that, uh, this year, the church is celebrating their one hundred and fiftieth year, uh, being in Cadillac. They were organized officially in eighteen seventy-four. And learned that prior to nineteen oh four, um, the services were all done in Swedish. So now, now everybody else knows that, that trivia as well, so. But with that, they are here, Sandy will get into in a second, uh, for the traditional off-premise sign request that they asked.
Okay. Thank you.
Sandy?
Yes, it's being recommended to approve the sign request from Zion Lutheran Church for their fall craft and bake sale on October eighteenth through the nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, as presented.
Can you say someone is here from the church?
I don't believe so.
I'll make a motion to approve the sign request from the very old and remarkable Zion Lutheran Church for their fall craft and bake sale on October eighteenth, nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, as presented.
Second.
Councilmember King. Shippers.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the closure of Lake Street between Cass and Harris from seven AM to eleven AM on November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four for the Toy Town Toy Trot Five K.
I'd make a motion to approve the closure of Lake Street between Cass Street and Harris Street from seven AM to eleven AM on November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four for the Toy Town Toy Trot Five K.
Support. Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King. Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the display of a banner from November eighteenth to the twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, for the Cadillac Garden Club Holiday Home Tour.
I'd make a motion to approve the display of a banner from November eighteenth to the twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, for the Cadillac Garden Club Holiday Home Tour.
Support. Councilmember Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King. Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Cass from four PM to eight PM and the closure of the north parking lot of the Cadillac Commons from three PM to eight PM on November twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, for Christmas in the park.
I will make that motion, I can't believe it's that time already. I will make that motion, um, to approve the closure of Lake Street between Cass and Harris from four PM to eight PM and the closure of the north parking lot of Cadillac Commons from three PM to eight PM on November twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, for Christmas in the park.
Second.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King. Shippers.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the request from Oasis Family Resource Center to hang purple lights on the light poles in the core downtown area during the month of October for Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
I'd make a motion to approve the request from Oasis Family Resource Center to hang purple lights on the light poles in the core downtown area during the month of October for Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Support. Councilmember King. Shippers.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries. And after all of that, that takes us to several appointments this evening.
Being recommended to approve the appointment of Matthew, Matthew Schickel to the local development finance authority for a four-year term to expire on October seventh, two thousand and twenty-eight.
Is Matthew Joe's grandson or son?
Don't know.
Okay.
But I know who Joe, I know who you're referring to.
Joe, Joe served on our planning commission for many, many years, so, okay.
Nice to see that they are, it's nice to see the family tradition continue for service.
Or it could be just this.
No, he said, yeah, Joe, Joe is his father, it says here now.
Okay, good, thank you.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Matthew Schickel to the local development finance authority for a four-year term to expire on October seventh, two thousand and twenty-eight.
Second.
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King. Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the appointment of William, William Tenza to the local development finance authority for a four-year term to expire on October seventh, two thousand and twenty-eight.
I'd make a motion to approve the appointment of William Tenza to the local development finance authority for a four-year term to expire on October seventh, two thousand and twenty-eight. Support.
Councilmember Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King. Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries. It's good to see Bill Tenza come out of retirement.
Yes.
Speaking of the chamber of commerce, he served with the chamber of commerce for a very, very long time. So it's good to see him stepping up to serve on one of our committees.
Being recommended to approve the appointment of Richard Torres to the local development finance authority for a four-year term to expire on October seventh, two thousand and twenty-eight.
I'd make a motion to approve the appointment of Richard Torres to the local development finance authority for a four-year term to expire October seventh, two thousand and twenty-eight.
Support.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King. Shippers.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the reappointment of Mary Jo O'Hagan to the board review for a two-year term to expire on November twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-six.
I will make, um, a motion to approve the reappointment of Mary Jo O'Hagan to the board of review for a two-year term to expire on November twenty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Councilmember King. Shippers.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the reappointment of Dale Rice to the planning commission for a three-year term to expire on October seventh, two thousand and twenty-seven.
I'd make a motion to approve the reappointment of Dale Rice to the planning commission for a three-year term to expire on October seventh, two thousand and twenty-seven.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King. Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Sandy. And that takes us to the city manager's report.
Uh, thank you, mayor, and members of the city council. Uh, first item under the report this evening, uh, is in regard to striking the twenty nineteen delinquent personal property taxes, uh, on list that we have. Uh, according to Public Act, uh, two zero six, uh, personal property taxes may be written off, um, if they've been delinquent for five years. There's a total of thirty-seven parcels that are still on our twenty nineteen delinquent personal property tax roll. Uh, as our communication talks about, these are, uh, these parcels are buildings on leased land, primarily decks or sheds on, uh, rented mobile home lots. Uh, the total that we're requesting being written off is less than twenty-five hundred dollars. It's two thousand four hundred thirty-eight dollars, seventy-two cents. Um, and we are recommending, um, uh, that council, uh, do approve striking the twenty nineteen delinquent personal property tax pursuant to Public Act, uh, two zero six, which is the, the property tax act. Further, trying to collect would, would just cost more than the collection itself.
And this makes sense, you know, folks don't pay a lot.
And we do this every, you know.
Once in a while.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve striking twenty nineteen delinquent personal property tax pursuant to Public Act two zero six, Property Tax Act.
Second.
Councilmember Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King. Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, uh, thank you, uh, mayor and members of the city council. Uh, the next item is a recommendation regarding the renewal of an agreement for services with the Alliance for Economic Success. Uh, back in, uh, twenty twenty-one, we did enter an agreement, uh, with the Alliance for Economic Success, or AES for short. Uh, and we are looking at continuing, um, having them serve as our, um, economic development organization, or EDO. Uh, the Alliance for Economic Success, um, is serving municipalities within Wexford uh, and Mesaki Counties. Uh, they're doing a terrific job. In fact, tomorrow, we have, uh, what will hopefully be the first annual development day. Um, it's an all-day experience where we'll be traveling around, uh, the city and Wexford County, as well as Mesaki County, uh, with folks, uh, from far and wide, uh, looking at potentially, uh, doing deals, uh, here in, in our community and in the surrounding region, uh, as well as folks that are just interested in learning more, uh, that, that, um, that we have to offer. Uh, wanted to, to read, uh, a couple of statements, um, that, uh, are within the agreement itself. It talks about how the Alliance for Economic Success shall serve as a resource throughout the region for various community economic development services, including but not limited to the following: strategic planning, industrial slash business park development, community development efforts, business attraction, business startup, business retention, business expansion, assistance in obtaining federal, state, and other economic development grants, serving as liaison with federal and state governments, grant administration services, economic, uh, assessment and analysis, brownfield redevelopment assistance, and historic preservation. I can, I can say that, um, in the very short time they've been here, that their director, um, has, has done all of those things in one way, shape, or another, and is continuing to grow an army of one. Our, the director is here, Nikki Schultz, along with, uh, their chair of the board, I believe, uh, Jeremy, um, Winkle. The, um, process, uh, for paying them, uh, is being recommended to be the same, where it's based on adverberum taxes. So the greater our value of property overall improves, you know, the greater, um, the amount that they receive. And so you'll see in the communication how that formula works out. Using just very general sort of round numbers, um, I believe the last agreement was around seven thousand-ish, seventy-five hundred. Uh, this one looks to be at about ninety-five oh one and fifty cents. And so, you know, it's going in the right direction. Obviously, that means that values are growing, um, and, you know, their compensation is growing with that accordingly. So I'm not sure if Nikki and or Jeremy have anything to say. Sorry to put you on the spot.
I would just remind council too, that, um, I sit on that board with Jeremy and Nikki. So I've sat on the board since the city had, has joined that group. And it is, um, hugely beneficial and, uh, they're doing some great things. But absolutely, we want to hear from you. Both.
Oh, I'm sorry. On the spot.
So I really don't have anything to say for those that were here probably six weeks ago. Um, we made a presentation for the board. I think our councilman Shippers was not here that week. Um, some of the work that we did, um, I think we talked about kind of the slow start that we got off to because of COVID and some staff transition. Nikki's doing a phenomenal job for us now through the partnership with MSU Extension. The mayor sits on our board, is actively involved in that. As the mayor mentioned, tomorrow is our first developer day. And we have thirty-six, I think, and more that are going to be on a CWTA bus. They're going to be touring our community. Many of the local developers are engaged, um, a lot of the ones that I don't know who they are. But it's developers that are coming to our community just to figure out what's happening. And then, so that's kind of the active thing. And then we're just working with community partners to promote Cadillac and the greater surrounding area for development perspective. And so that's what we do. If you have any questions, we have to answer that. But, um, I'm very happy to say over the years that I've been involved in this, we've only lost one funding partner. And that was the township over to the west. Um, that really doesn't have a whole lot of, um, right up by the country club, whatever that is, just to the.
Cherry Grove?
Cherry Grove. They started for one year. Um, they honestly didn't see the value in it, but they don't have a whole lot of economic drivers out there, if you want to say it that way. We'd love to get Haring involved with the economic developments that's there. But as far as Mesaki County, you guys, or Wexford County, plus, um, a few others in the middle, plus a lot of local businesses, um, we've retained all of our, um, funding partners through that process.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for services with the Alliance for Economic Success.
Second.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King. Shippers.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries.
Uh, thank you, uh, mayor, members of the city council. Uh, final item under the manager's report this evening is a COLA update and, uh, a request. Uh, as the communication states, uh, after successful negotiations were completed just this past summer with our fire union, uh, all staff members except for me have now received, uh, and in fact, retro regarding the fire union, uh, annual cost of living adjustments as follows. Uh, non-union at three and a half percent, um, our police unions at four percent and three percent, uh, fire union at four percent, and steelworkers at three percent. And so respectfully, uh, as I put in my communication, and certainly very humbly, uh, especially as I embark on my fifteenth, um, uh, service year anniversary uh, with, uh, the city of Cadillac, um, uh, uh, especially as I embark on my fifteenth um uh service year anniversary uh with the City of Cadillac um uh this coming November, uh, I do request council uh to basically make the uh a compensatory modification within my agreement uh that would minimally keep me in pace with the department as another non-union staff. Uh, and so the the language that I'm proposing would just simply be to automatically annually adjust my base uh minim- minimally by whatever the non-union percentage increase was, effective for July one. That's when all of the non-union uh staff member receive it. Uh, for this year, I am requesting uh that it is retroactive to May twentieth, which is when I traditionally would have received uh an adjustment. Uh, two other uh non-compensatory uh requests that I'm asking council to consider would be to update uh language uh regarding my annual review from shell to May review annually. Additionally, to include language that would require a four-fifths vote to terminate my agreement as well. And that is it. The recommendation, obviously, following any council uh discussion would be uh to essentially uh direct the city attorney to make the revisions accordingly and authorize the mayor to execute an amendment to the agreement.
Did I miss the memo?
You must have.
I must have. That said, we aren't doing evaluations this year?
Um, no.
There was no memo?
No.
There's no memo?
Not going to do any evaluations this year?
Well.
I realize mine was very unpopular last year.
It's it's not that it's unpopular. Um, you know, each year when we step through this process, for whatever reason, historically, Cadillac has made our work in evaluating our city manager very public. And when we were speaking with the MML and when we were at conference just this fall, you know, I asked peers.
I was here.
You were there. You heard it. Um, I asked peers about that process and how uncomfortable it is for the council, how uncomfortable it is for our city manager, and how do they handle that annual discussion? And we got some really good feedback from that.
That means you agreed with the feedback.
I thought it was really good feedback. You were in the session, too.
Yeah.
Um, we can certainly have more discussion about that since we heard, since the three of us all heard that at the same time.
I I I guess there's a, when you start doing things behind doors or not letting the public in, there's a lack of transparency, and also we lose trust. And I would rather see, if we're going to do this, that we have a full council, meaning Mr. King was here.
Right, and so.
I mean, this this kind of got, looks like it got slipped in with the cost of living with the other ones.
Yeah, no, I I respect that concern.
Yeah.
But the only thing that that's being asked for this evening is that the city manager receives what everyone else in this organization has received, and that is the three and a half percent. It, we didn't talk about, we didn't talk about the evaluation process, and I am really very open to having that discussion, and it should be when all of us are here.
This is a, this is a pretty big vote. I mean, I'd, I really would like to see all the council be here when it comes to voting Marcus's raise in.
I don't think a cost of living is really.
I call it a raise. When I worked here, when we got a cost of living, it was called a raise.
Yeah.
So, so I'd make a motion that we table Marcus's uh raise until councilperson King gets back. I don't expect anybody to second it.
Um, yeah, no, I I I will um support that. But I I would like to say, you know, when you talk about the missed um evaluation, there was no memo. I didn't get a memo. There's never been a conversation. But it became obviously apparent to me um in a year followed by, you know, our evaluations have basically been the same for the last two or three years.
Longer.
We've had a uh, you know, the vote of no confidence at the end of the um Airbnb thing, you know. So I was not, as as far as this not coming up, I certainly wasn't asking questions. I certainly wasn't asking where it was. And I didn't really think there was any mystery as to how it was going to go. Um, I will most likely um uh end up supporting this. Um, but I do, I do think um that I will, I will do that when um Councilmember King is present as well.
So you second my motion?
Yeah.
The next meeting.
Next meeting.
Councilmember King, Shippers.
Yes.
Allenboss.
Yes means we table it?
Yes.
Yes.
You made the motion.
I know, I'm just double checking. Not that I don't trust you, but. Yes. Sometimes I don't.
Felkins.
Yes.
Table to bring it back at the next meeting?
Yes.
Thanks, Robert.
I'd also like us to um have a discussion about, I mean, every year we talk about how we want to do evaluation, and we have never gotten close to mastering it. So.
I agree.
And so I'm thinking that, you know, the input that I heard at the MML conference and in looking at and contacting other people, looking at stuff, there are a variety of options, and I would love for us to look at those and try to come up with something that isn't so, it's so combative. You know, an evaluation, the purpose of an evaluation is to help with growth. Um, and so I want to figure out a way that we can do that. We have evolved a little bit where we're now, we are having a conversation all together. I like that. I'm thinking that. Anyway, but I I'd like us to discuss that.
Don't ever think you don't do combative very well.
I know I do, but I don't appreciate, I don't enjoy it.
I don't enjoy it either.
Yeah, me, yeah.
All right. Come on, come on, stop.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on. Um, we have some ordinances that need to be, um, we need to adopt a resolution to introduce.
Yes, give me one second. Um, so thank you. The uh first item this evening uh is an ordinance regarding the amending of our zoning code uh that will allow us to be able to regulate uh the use of land in the city uh for utility-scale battery energy storage systems. Uh, and uh the request is to simply set the public hearing for October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. In short, um, we do not have um some type of development or project waiting in the midsts. This is simply a a request to adjust the zoning codes so that we don't lose local control. Otherwise, we'll lose local control to the state of Michigan, and then if at some point in the future we do have a large-scale um uh battery storage at sort of a utility company-level scale project coming forward, we won't be anything other than just a pass-through. And and so this this will allow us to be able to continue to to locally manage that project along with other types of projects. So.
I make a motion to approve the resolution to introduce ordinance to add a new section forty-six dash seven fifty-four to and amend sections forty-six dash five twenty-six and forty-six dash seven forty-five of the Code of Ordinances, set a public hearing for October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Allenboss.
No.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King, Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries.
What time? Do you have a, do you have a reason for proposing this, Brian? Did I miss the battery storage?
Memo?
The whole idea is unacceptable to me.
Well, we don't have control. We don't want the state to tell us what we have to. This is about local control.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so I would like to get, um, I'm assuming we usually do when we do the public um hearings, a small, I I did watch the Planning Commission. Um, but I I do know they had questions, too, and and you could see the audience, even the audience had questions about that.
Right.
That we're going to do a bit more of a presentation.
Yeah, we can have John.
Yeah, let's do that.
Give a couple of slides on it, so.
Yeah, and I think, like you said, it has to do with what the state of Michigan is doing, and they're giving us the option to regulate it if we put that um language in place.
Right, o- otherwise, we lose the ability to
Yes.
to regulate this type of use, and then it just happens.
And then they can put it anywhere they want to.
Pretty much.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Um, okay, uh, uh, next request is to uh set a public hearing for October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four uh regarding amending uh sections of the zoning code, sections forty-six dash four, forty-six dash one eighty-six, uh, and forty-six dash two sixteen. Um, this, uh, just to overly simplify it, uh, is regarding uh bed and breakfast. Um, I think uh it might be helpful, even though we'll have uh a a repeat of this information as a part of the public hearing. Um, I will read um how we're proposing to define bed and breakfast. This is what came out of the recommendation uh from the uh Planning Commission. And so the definition of bed and breakfast would be, uh, bed and breakfast means a single-family dwelling unit in which up to eight rooms are available for rent to transient tenants for fewer than fifteen days during which the innkeeper resides in the dwelling unit. Uh, the term bed and breakfast is also known as a tourist home. Um, so again, the the key takeaway is the innkeeper has to live there, um, has to be there. Uh, the amendment of section forty-six dash twenty-six also uh includes the new subsection seven, which would be titled Bed and Breakfast, that would be added to the current list of six other special land uses that are already permitted within the residential multifamily one and two zoning districts. And those six other uses um are recreational activities, offices, and or businesses in an existing building, office and or business in a in a dwelling, which would be a mixed-use type facility, a family shelter, a group shelter, or a combination group and family shelter, and then seven would be bed and breakfast. And I think, just to to try to even clarify more, these these uses are not allowed by right. And so what that means is that even if you're in the residential multifamily zoning one or two districts, and the use that you wish to to do on your property is one of the one of the seven I just read, you you're not allowed just to do it. You still have to go to the Planning Commission and get a special use permit approved specifically because those seven uses, including bed and breakfast, should that be you know, should that be added to the list, have been identified as uses that need a higher level of scrutiny. It's not just good enough that it's within those zones. Location is also going to be a part of the analysis in terms of whether or not whatever that particular use might be is appropriate for the location within that zone itself. So, you know, just because property X might be one that the Planning Commission says, sure, uh, bed and breakfast would be fantastic there. It doesn't mean that if property Y comes out of the woodwork, you know, three days later down the street or something, that they're going to also s- agree that that use would be appropriate at that location as well. And I know that there was at the Planning Commission level of of conversation, I maybe some confusion um about that somehow this would just allow the use to be um allowed if it's within that zone. That's not true. So it it does require um a level of scrutiny. So in any event, um, unless I've managed to confuse everybody here, the request this evening is to just simply set the public hearing for October twenty-first.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, this is one, again, where I thought the Planning Commission did a good job. I think a lot of um important work goes on down there. They struggle through a lot of um problems. They listen to a lot of people. Um, you know, I've stayed in a lot of Airbnbs and a couple of bed and breakfasts and I've never been um confused about which is which. Um, I understand you're looking for a technical definition, and technically, we define a bed and breakfast as a place where the innkeeper resides in the dwelling unit. Technically, we're regulating our bed and breakfast so that they can only stay there for fifteen days. You know, I know another concern about um, you know, whether these are going to cause problems, whether we're going to have the same problems. I got a call into um Luddington, you know, that's a community um with a a nice RM one-zone stretch along Luddington Avenue and uh more than a couple um bed and breakfasts. I believe they also have Airbnbs. And if you're looking for a community comparison as to what the struggles are with the bed and breakfast versus what the struggles are with the Airbnbs, um, and you know, how the community deal deals with them, you know, that's what I'm looking for. So I I do have a call into Luddington. Um, and I think when it comes to the RM one area right there, you know, these aren't our, um, this isn't our R one. Um, this isn't our R two or even our R three. These places don't look like the rest of the neighborhoods um that we've been fighting to uh protect. The actual bed and breakfast that's going to request, I believe, the special use permit if this passes, um, is about two blocks from me. I live right on Cass Street there. Um, I think that's a perfect spot for that. I don't think it destroys the integrity of the neighborhood. Um, I think it'll be a nice addition. Um, and you know, if you if you had an argument that some of our RM one maybe shouldn't be zoned, RM one, you know, I'd definitely entertain that. But um it does seem like bedding breakfasts are going to be a good fit um in this, in this um zone.
And on one of the busiest streets in Cadillac.
Yeah, and and the specific one, you know, that 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 this change is being prompted by, I th- I think will also be positive, yeah, so.
Thank you for your thoughts.
I I just wanted to to say, Councilmember and and everyone on on the board, that that's the key to all of this, which is it's, it is not a blanket approval. You know, it's a case-by-case basis that by having the tool in your zoning code, you allow the Planning Commission to be able to work through. So.
Have we got enforcement figured out yet?
Sure.
Who's going to enforce?
The Community Development Department, like like they do the zoning code.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, another question about enforcement, when um the um, like, the fire codes for these this type of place is set by the state of Michigan, right?
Presumably, yeah.
And and so you'd also have the fire marshal in there looking for that type of thing, yeah. So it's definitely a higher level.
Department for food.
And the health department for food, yeah, because I know that was one of the questions, so. Um, again, like I said, I've stayed at both, and I um, like, you know, the bed and breakfasts are definitely um quieter, more supervised, different neighborhood feel.
This house was once a bed and breakfast already, right?
The specific.
Back in the eighties with feasters, right?
Feasters, yeah.
But it's going to be about two blocks from me, and I, you know, I welcome it, so.
Thank you for your thoughts on that. Would someone entertain that motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to introduce ordinance to amend section forty-six dash four, uh, forty-six dash one eighty-six, and forty-six dash two sixteen of the Code of Ordinances, and set a public hearing for October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Councilmember Allenboss.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King, Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, um, thank you. Uh, we are now looking at uh adoption of a resolution regarding the North Lake Street Flats uh project uh and their brownfield plan. Again, we're looking at setting a public hearing for October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. Um, I will say that uh in uh summary, we are looking at about four to six of these things possibly coming forward, uh, this being the first one. Um, and we're certainly excited uh to uh to have it finally getting to this point. There's been a lot of work and a lot of conversation going going over the last probably couple of years at least on 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 this project.
And our friends at AES, who we talked about earlier.
Yep.
Um, that contract that we have with them were helpful in this whole process.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Um, we are um pleased uh that the project uh is about forty-eight new units, at least that's what we're estimating, uh, to be constructed uh about a block just north of where we're sitting, off of uh North Lake Street and Nelson Streets. Uh, the Brownfield Authority has already approved the draft brownfield plan that's being proposed for the redevelopment of that property. The property right now is just very vacant. And to try to reorient or orient people, if you know where the the Wexford County Lake Street um administrative building is, it's just across the street.
If you just say behind G and D.
Or behind G and D, thank you. Yes, or or behind G and D.
Everyone's.
Uh, so the the brownfield uh plan or uh project that's being uh proposed uh would uh provide for reimbursement of brownfield environmental and housing development eligible activity costs, including environmental due diligence uh and the gap between development and rental re- rental revenues uh for units uh for qualified households with income of a hundred and twenty percent or less of the area median income. This is a brand-new tool uh that is being uh uh that has been made available by the state of Michigan for the purposes of trying to encourage residential development. And we will have our brownfield consultant also at our next meeting to be able to field any questions that council may have. But we are, we are excited to see this thing continuing to move forward. We've also had a meeting of our Downtown Development Authority, and they have agreed as well to enter into an inter-local agreement with Cadillac Brownfield Authority regarding the collection of tax increment financing dollars, because its location is within the Cadillac Downtown Development Authority area, and you can't have two TIFs operating at the same time. One has to go on pause while the other one is in place, which is not unusual. They did that for Cadillac Lofts, have done that for, you know, the, the old, the bank where Horizon's at, Ace Hardware, and, and all the other ones up and along the VDA area as well, so. Great, great relationships between the boards.
Did we already do that or no?
No.
I'll make a motion to adopt. The sun is in my eyes, and I love it. I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution regarding North Lake Street Flats Brownfield Plan and set a public hearing for October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Support.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King? Shippers?
Yes.
Allenbos?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries this time. We'll go ahead and open the floor for our second public comment this evening.
My name is Audrey Wood. I am here to talk about the PFAS Bowl. I was wondering if anyone had made any, uh, progress in doing a town hall? Or if anyone had any plans to do a town, town hall like was, it was discussed, uh, last meeting? Also discussed to, about educating everybody on PFAS and-
I can address it.
It'd be really appreciated if there was some movement with that. It's been two weeks now, so, um. Please help us in the city, not me, I'm not actually in the city, but please help people. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the Good of the Order. So Marcus, would you like to address that?
I'd be happy to. First thing that I, I wanted to do is to apologize to a resident that came forward earlier this evening regarding the, uh, the cost estimate. I had no idea, when you were here a couple of weeks ago, or three weeks ago, whenever it was, that your property was in a water district where there's a special assessment attached to it, which is why it's closer to six thousand versus, versus the three thousand number in terms of the estimate. But we still would need you, if you are interested in, in connecting, to connect with your own private contractor, just to verify our rough estimate of the three thousand dollar number. The only number that we know, honestly, that would, that would be like a factual number is the, I think it's around twenty-two seventy, which is the district fees to connect. Basically, a special assessment is, is in that area back when the infrastructure was put in. All the properties within that zone, there's a formula that's, that's out there that would be incumbent upon them to pay in order to be able to connect to the city infrastructure, because those costs were already floated, and so the developer didn't, didn't put them in. The city ended up doing it, which is why there's the, why there's a reimbursement provision that's legally in the, in the books on that. Regarding the, uh, a town hall on PFAS, we are, and when I say we, I'm now referring to the Local Development Finance Authority, are in the process of bringing on board a company called Warner Norcross. They are specific environmental attorneys that are expert in, in PFAS, among other things. We anticipate having them onboard later this fall. We think we'll be in a position before the end of the calendar year, but it might be honestly, uh, very early into the new year in which we could have them come here and provide sort of an explanation as to where everything is at. The issue is that there's just a lot of moving pieces to all of this. There are a lot of things that are being tested. I'll kick it to our Utilities Director in a second to, to perhaps clarify anything if I misspeak. But in short, the amount of PFAS that the Local Development Finance Authority is injecting into the surface water or, or water source, which is the Clam River, are trillions of parts well below any of the, any of the threshold in which it would be a no-go. So the no-go threshold is one-seventy. Where are we at, Jeff, give or take?
Below four.
And four is if you were to literally take your cup and put it under that spigot and drink it. So four is the drinking water level. So we are well underneath it. Now, people might say, well, I'm confused. I thought you do have PFAS. We do have PFAS. We are always going to have PFAS. The federal government can continue to adjust the thresholds. The state government can, can adjust the thresholds, but right now, we are, we are incredibly below where it becomes a problem zone. It becomes a problem when you're at a hundred and seventy parts per trillion. I believe the reporting requirement is twelve parts per trillion?
For discharge after cleanup, and, and I, I, I know what you're saying, but that's our groundwater cleanup plant.
Okay.
We have no PFAS in the city of Cadillac drinking water. That is non-detected in the water that we're supplying. I just want people, when you said we'll always have PFAS, we have none in the drinking water.
That, right, that, that is a different-
In our groundwater cleanup plant, we have some that's going out to the Clam River.
Yeah, that is a, that is a significant distinction. Cadillac drinking water is a municipal, municipal well source. It comes from two separate wellfields. Completely different than the Local Development Finance Authority wells, cleanup wells, that I was referring to. So the, the total aggregate discharge from the cleanup wells within the Local Development Finance Authority area, which is, which is within geographically the industrial area of the city, the total aggregate amount of discharge coming from those wells into the Clam River is below the level in which the government says is safe for drinking water. And so there's a lot of conversation out there, but that's what the facts are. And we want to make sure, though, that we understand fully where, where it's coming from, because there's a whole slew of wells. We, we think we have an idea which of the wells might be wells with PFAS in it. And the LDFA last week agreed that we are now going to test, I think it's up to five, five of those wells, five of those water cleanup wells, to see if any one of them or a combination of them happen to be, you know, the wells in which they're, they're testing for the PFAS. But even if, even if they are, there may not be anything we can necessarily do with them, because again, the aggregate, when it gets combined with all of the other water that gets discharged in, is still well below where the government says is a, is a problem area. So if there is something that we can do with it, then certainly we'll explore what, what that is. I can't sit here tonight and tell you that there may not be anything. I'm just trying to explain tonight that we're well within a, a safety zone. Also, we, you know, as the LDFA had talked about ad nauseam at their last meeting, and the last meeting before that, about having an additional consultation come onboard to work with the environmental attorney that we already have with us. You know, it's just, it's process. And so, you know, once we have, you know, sort of all of our ducks in a row, that's when we're going to come back and do a community spotlight on where everything is at.
Great.
So.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that they agreed upon having this additional resource come onboard, because it's a, it's a complicated conversation.
Very complicated.
And it's very frightening to people who don't know the answers, so, and even, yeah.
People, though, that are not on our municipal water system, that are on private wells, we, we don't know what their own water contains. We don't have access to that. That would be, you know, something that, that people that are on those systems would need to, to check.
Right, yes.
So I'm, um, can I, can I say something?
Sure.
So, um, I remember when I was young way back in the last century, and we first moved here, our street was paved and improved, sewer and everything were improved, and we saw an assessment that was, um, where we were, you know, I, we were a young family. I was a primary wage earner, teaching at a Catholic school. You know, we were living on very little money, and I saw that assessment that we were going to have to pay this with the paving of the road. And then I learned that it would be paid over time, and so I was able to sleep again. So I'm wondering, you know, the fact that the city drinking water has zero PFAS, has no traces of PFAS, and we have residents who are not on the well. I have no idea if this po- this is possible, but being able to spread that assessment out over many years, because we had like nothing, made it possible for us to do that. Is there a mechanism where, with this sort of thing, where instead of, like, this family having to put out six thousand dollars to get safe water, that, I know that there are some private plumbing costs and things that we can't, we can't, we can't pay for, and we just can't, but like the city's piece, can we spread that out? So that it's not this huge hit that people absolutely cannot afford?
We would need legal to take a look at it. I'm not certain how the district was put in place. My assumption is that it was probably put in place by ordinance, so it might require an amendment to the ordinance. Or it may already be in there right now. I'm, I'm, I wasn't prepared to answer that question. But I know that when we do, you know, special assessments for, as you said, street repaving or other infrastructure sidewalks, things of that nature, you know, we are allowed to go up to a certain number of years where the special assessment is, is on the property itself, and then whether they're still there or, or the property sells, you know, that, it doesn't go away, it's, it's, it goes with the property. So if there's, if there's a way, then we'll certainly look at it.
Will you ask Mike to look at that?
Yeah, he, Mike's on right now.
Are you there? Would you check that out for us?
It's a great idea.
It also makes me wonder about the knowledge that local real estate agents have in regards to those properties that are still on wells. And when a potential buyer is going to purchase a home in that area, is there any conversation with that property owner about what it would take to upgrade to city services?
Yeah, we're not privy to what realtors do.
I'm just talking out loud.
Yeah, oh, sure, yeah.
I'm just talking out loud.
It would be nice if they would do that.
Right, so.
Is there a Realtors Association that we can ask to do that?
I don't know.
Just as private citizens?
Yeah. That's outside of our bailiwick, I guess, so.
Jeff wanted to also throw-
Yes, Jeff.
Miss Lil- Miss Lily had asked us if the EPA had done any testing out in the area. I want to answer that. The state of Michigan did in twenty or twenty-one. EPA has not done any testing since then. We are, as Marcus said, are going to test five wells in the area, five of our cleanup production walls, not private citizens. Also, the state of Michigan, the M Part, that's the Michigan PFAS Action Committee or something like that, they're going to test twenty homes in the North Park area to see if there's any contamination that outside of our cleanup area. The town hall suggestion, I have a meeting with the M Part and EPA about putting together a evening town hall meeting on this Thursday, when, on this Thursday, I have the meeting to discuss about setting up a town hall meeting in the future. So I'm going to talk to them and see what their ideas are, and-
Okay.
But they, they are interested in having a town hall meeting up in Cadillac, and obviously having city council, having M Part, having EPA, everybody in it, but they have to plan it first, so. And that planning session is the ninth, so I don't know when their date they propose would be in the future.
Of November?
What?
The ninth of November?
No, ninth of October.
Oh, this Thursday? Oh, okay.
He's just here on the conversation.
About the planning of-
Oh, okay, got you, okay.
I didn't want anybody to panic. It's, it's the planning of when we're going to have the PFAS.
Okay.
Town halls. So it is in a, a moving, they want to do it, especially since they're going to be doing the North Park area. They want to do a, a, a kind of a preemptive, uh, talk to the community about what they're doing, I think. So that is a little different than the one Marcus is talking about, so.
Okay, thank you.
Can I sort of quick just also say that I know how frustrating it is to have the timeframe be so long for things like this? And when I was there, not here, I felt that same frustration. I was like, well, we, we set up our recycling, we met at my living room, we set it up in, you know, and it was up and running thirty days later. Well, if you look like tonight, the Planning Commission meets, then we have a week, then we have to wait two weeks, then we have to wait two weeks. And that's just the way that things are, and I know it's frustrating, but things take time. When you move things in municipal, in state, in any government, there's a process that is sometimes painfully slow and long. And something that I've learned in my thousand years here is that, not here in this seat, but on this planet, is that, it feels like it today anyway, is that sometimes that length of time is a good thing. Because in that, that slow process, so much more information can be garnered and learned. And you have an opportunity to listen to so many more people and get other ideas and other things in. And I went from being super frustrated in how slow it was to, at some points, still frustrated, but mostly grateful for the time it takes to get these things done so that we can pull in the whole community and find out all the things that we need in order to make good decisions.
And, and in support of what Tia just said, you know, recently I heard a statement, and it said, facts are our friends. You know, there's a lot of information that goes on on social media, whether it's about PFAS or it's about whatever it's about. There is so much information out on social media. How do we know what's truly a fact and what isn't? And so by taking this journey that Tia was just referring to, those facts are going to be our friend as we move forward, making certain that everyone is safe, so.
Our children are not safe. They're being poisoned. That's why we're frustrated.
They're not being poisoned by the city.
Okay, let's, let's move on to the rest of the Good of the Order. Does anyone else have anything?
Something lighter, I hope?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Recently, I had a tour of the post office with Chris Lantham and Richard Schultz. But at the end of the meeting, we had a very brief discussion about the Sesquicentennial. We're three, well, a little less than three years out now, so we probably can wait another until next summer, but eventually
We need to start planning.
The heads are going to have to start getting together for a committee, and I would like to be involved. I know Richard would. I have an idea where I could help out. So, yeah, two years out is when we really need to get a little bit more serious than with a year to go. I, I think I'm the only one here that was here for the other one in seventy-one. And that was, that was a fun time, that, that, you talked about bringing the community together.
Yeah.
That will, that will do it.
That's great.
Yeah, so let's think about that for the future. Councilmember, was Richard starting a committee with? No, no, we just talked about the fact that probably next summer, somebody's going to have to-
We need to find somebody to drive the bus and make sure that we've got all the different groups who want to be a part of planning are a part of the planning.
And, yeah, and lots of, ideas are good. Ideas are even better when you've got an idea you can actually do.
There you go.
I mean, I got a hundred ideas, but I got one I can help with. So, yeah, that's it.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, great conversation, and with that, we're going to go ahead and adjourn. No closing. And with that, we're going to go ahead and adjourn. No close session tonight. Thank you.